Yeah.
I always do.
Yeah, you do.
And I sit here and yell at people.
Could you repeat the question?
Are we doing a microphone?
We do.
No.
No.
Where's Ashley's neighbor? The Ashley? Oh, there she is.
Wow. No, we, I think we only have three. Okay, so we got a few people coming in.
And I'm just like stepping off to the side, yeah, of people.
Yep.
Are you not going to sit down?
I didn't.
Did I say that?
That's what I said.
Just as a reminder for those on the Zoom meeting, please mute yourselves.
Yeah, one minute. Oh gosh, it's awful quiet in here. It's fun to see all the red and festive colors for Christmas. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I'm Betsy Vale. If I have not met, I know some of our new residents who have moved in with us. I'm going to start out our town hall meeting today, just kind of going over our occupancy numbers and where we currently are. And then Diane, I'm sure, will go over some of what marketing is doing to continue to get those sales. So independent living is currently at 90% occupied and 94% sold. So those are great numbers as we continue to see those climb. Assisted living is 78% and 79% sold. Our health center is currently at 54%. We have, our rehab center is currently closed. A little, for good news, we don't have any COVID positive residents. And so that's, that's definitely a plus, but we are hoping to open up a portion of the rehab center to be able to get some, some folks in that are needing some rehab. So hopefully, starting January 1st, Kathy and Lisa are going to start focusing on our rehab. Resident numbers, we have 360 residents on our campus. 209 independent living with 55 second persons. We have 65 in assisted living and 31 currently in our health center. And then our employee full-time equivalents are 222 to a budget of 237. So you can see, we're still quite a ways away from our budgeted FTEs, the full-time equivalent employees. Last I looked, I think we had about 35 positions that we're still trying to fill, just like the rest of the world is out there, trying to fill those vacant positions. So we continue to work on those every day. So those are some of our, our metrics on our occupancy levels. Our update, one of the updates is the, the COVID transmission rate that we typically talk about also at this, at this meeting, which is, this is a seven days metrics. And it has continued to climb in the Kalamazoo County. We still are considered in the, the high risk or the, the red level. And that means that we should continue to wear masks in public and indoor settings. Mask requirements may vary from place to place, but please make sure that we're all following the, the rules and the guidance, especially with the holidays approaching and a lot of visitors and, and you all may be going to family and friends' homes. You know, we, we really encourage you to continue to wear your mask as much as possible, just, just because we never know who might be asymptomatic in that. Omicron is a very fast growing and contagious variant of, of COVID. So we're trying to keep everybody as healthy as possible. And so the, just to give you an idea, we've went from, started out in this, count, community transmission rate from 8.26% to 10.28% and currently at 13.2%. Think last week we were at 13.65, so we've come down a smidge, which is great news, but we'd like to see it to continue to decline. While I'm, I'm talking about COVID, I'll continue to talk about the vaccine mandate and where we are currently today with that. I think at our last town hall meeting, I had reported that CMS had put, Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services had put out a mandate for everybody in a community like ours, for all the staff to be vaccinated. And there were certain dates that came along with that. And then there was a judge in Louisiana who had put a stay or a hold on that particular mandate for, he, at that point, it was the entire nation. And we're finding out that actually he did not have the jurisdiction or should have done that. He did not have the ability to do that, other than for those states that were currently in that lawsuit. So that is, and Michigan is not one of those states that was in the lawsuit. So that stay or hold does not pertain to us and many others in Michigan. But Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services are, are just looking and really trying to figure out then, what we need to do to move forward. So at this point, we're waiting to just get a little bit more direction from them so that we can move forward one way or the other with which we're going to go for the vaccine mandate for staff. Any questions on that before Gail?
On more of our staff, specifically housekeeping, getting vaccinated?
Gail's question was, are more of our staff, specifically housekeeping, getting vaccinated? Our current vaccination rate is 72%, which is a pretty good rate compared to a lot of other communities like ours. Environmental Services is one of the higher vaccinated departments. I'll share, let's see, the health center and Woodside. And it goes directly in that order, the health center and then Woodside and, and food and beverage are probably the three areas that we're continuing to, to encourage the staff to get vaccinated. There are lower percentage departments that are vaccinated. So Fay, you said you are in favor of? Yeah, Fay. Okay, so Fay is sharing that she is in favor of the vaccination. She would not want an unvaccinated person in her apartment. I know the Board of Directors is also looking at this. On our last call Friday was our last board meeting, and there was a lot of discussion around the mandate and, and which direction the board would like to see us go for Friendship Village. So as well as CMS, so between the two entities, we will certainly keep you posted on, on which direction we're going to go and, and what the dates would be. We had started the exemption process, so if you remember, there, there was an exemption process for, for religious beliefs as well as medical conditions that don't allow somebody to get the vaccine. We started through that process with the exemptions. And Tyler Gibb, who is our board chair, he's an ethicist and also has a law degree. He and Stephanie, our HR director, really had started going through those exemptions and looking at whether or not they're going to be honored or not. So even though there was a stay put on the actual mandate, we continue to encourage people to, if they were going to try for an exemption, to continue to do so because we're not sure how fast this is going to turn around and we would certainly want things to be in place as much as possible if, if the mandate goes through, whether it's from CMS or it's from the Board of Directors. So I, I promise you, I will keep you all updated as, as soon as we hear. We'll get a Connections Matters out to everybody so they all know what direction and, and we'll be going on that. All right, next I am going to have Shannon Johnson come up. She is with our, our rehab company and they're going to go over a few things with rehab.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Shannon Johnson. I'm the therapy director here at Friendship Village. How's that? Everybody hear me a little better? There we go. I'm Shannon Johnson. I'm the therapy director here. Just want to take a little moment of your time today to introduce myself and put face of the name and see if anyone had any questions on process of therapy and also just talk a little bit about what we offer. We do offer physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech therapy here for all residents in the health center, rehab, assisted living, and throughout the entire community. We also do treat staff that works here as well for workers comp if they own it themselves. And anyone that's from the community can come in and see us if they'd like to, if they have friends or family. We can pretty much, as long as we have a doctor's prescription, we can see them. When you do receive a prescription from your doctor, you can either drop that off at the front desk or bring it down to my office in the rehab gym. And then what we do from there is we kind of got contact the business office manager and they just kind of see what your insurance is, if you have to be prior authorized or if we can go ahead and start treating and what your co-pay might be. So we'll have all that information for you when you come in. And then after we get that back, I can schedule you. And we can really see people from really all levels. Someone who needs to learn to walk again, neck pain, back pain, shoulder. If you need help in your apartment with, you know, adaptive equipment, OT is great at, you know, kind of helping you stay in that area longer by giving you things to make dressing getting easier where you're not needing more services and you're able to stay as independent as possible. And then see you throughout all that time. One thing I did want to highlight today is that I have Suzie here with us, my speech therapist. And she, I think speech therapy is the one thing that people probably wonder the most about, like, what does that mean? Is it, I can talk, okay, or, you know, I'm able to, you know, things that, without any memory issues? But she can give a little bit of just insight to something that she has been working with several of their independent living residents, like really helping them set up some things, really be successful in their apartments. And then if we have any questions, we'll take those, okay?
Hi, everyone. My name is Suzie Paz.
You're going to turn on the camera.
Hi, everyone. My name is Suzie Paz Luizney. Funny last name, I won't repeat it, don't worry about it. Well, just call me Suzie. And I'm, so you can't hear me? Is that better? Okay. My name is Suzie. We'll, we'll leave it at that. I'm the speech therapist here at Friendship Village. And I work in all areas of the skilled nursing and the healthcare center, independent living, Woodside, our memory care, and some of the outpatient as well. I'm here today as I get a lot of questions about what I do. And being a speech therapist by trade, speech therapy connotes that you have an issue with your speech. And that's actually very different than what I do. I work a lot with memory and swallowing issues and helping folks after a stroke. So those are the three big areas that I work in. And I just kind of want to bring that to you all in case you have any areas that you are seeing changes in. We've all been through a lot of trauma during your COVID and maybe making some moves over the last year, year and a half, being more isolated. We're just finding that some folks are struggling a little bit with, you know, keeping track of things. Sometimes it's financial, sometimes it's appointments. Other times it's just, you know, some forgetfulness. But we've been able to make some real strides with some folks and putting some things into place to help you, you know, thrive in your apartments and staying at home and staying on track with the things that you like to do and engage in. So I know it's a lot. If you have any questions, let me know. And as far as like swallowing and the after-stroke care or even folks that have neurological diseases like Parkinson's, MS, ALS, those sorts of things, then we do delve into some of the, the speech components. So any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Any, any questions, just in the overall process?
So Shannon, I have a question. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
So let's say, for instance, I, I felt like I needed, I'm a resident. And I felt like, I'm not really sure if I could use the services. I feel like I might be suffering a little bit from memory loss. Is, is there a, a screening process that I can go through that's not going to really cost me anything until I then go get my prescriptions for the actual therapy? Is that something you provide?
Sure, we can definitely do that. I, either myself or my OT, Bethany is also very good at checking on cognition. Suzie gets a lot of referrals from Renee and those over those things. So there is some screening too, that we can even just ask a few questions and kind of, you know, they can pick our brain or we can pick their brain to see if there's something that, usually can tell if it, I think if you think you need it, you probably do, whether it's PTO to your speech. But I'm happy to answer any questions. Someone come down or I'll come to apartments. I go up and even just check down people in their apartment, have a conversation with them and see, let them know we have to offer. And so, yeah, I mean, it's not a formal one, but it's more informal.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that. I, I think that there are residents that, that would probably appreciate that and didn't know that that was something that they could ask for prior to actually getting the therapy.
Sorry, I would like to try to like kind of be out these things a little bit more and just be, you know, have some question and answer kind of sessions like you talked about in the Wellness Center to just kind of be available. Even if it's just kind of ask a therapist kind of time, maybe once a month, not necessarily with this, but maybe at other times. So we set up. And that way you, it's like, right now you're going to have a question right off the top of your head. Maybe, you know, later or over the week, you might think like, maybe I better go check on that. So definitely feel, feel free to call me or come down to my office. And I can, I can go up to the apartments as well. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're doing Zoom. This is kind of a double town hall here. So we are doing Zoom and in-person, and we got a chat from somebody that says, if a resident prefers only vaccinated staff in our unit, is that enforceable? And, and my answer, because Ken asked me, was not, not really. It would be very, very difficult because I think every resident here would want an unvaccinated staff member in their apartment or their garden home. So it would be really difficult for us to try to schedule that, for us to do that currently at this point. The question was, is that issue under consideration? And if somebody is unvaccinated and they go through, let's say, for instance, we did move forward with our, our staff needs to be vaccinated to work here and/or they have an exemption, a religious or a medical exemption. There are processes that they have to go through in order to continue to work here. For instance, they all need to wear an N95 mask when they're here at work. And that's different than, you know, our regular masks that we currently have. There are certain break areas where they'll be able to break because they should not be breaking with people that are vaccinated because you're taking, you're taking off your mask to eat and drink. And the people that are vaccinated would, would not, should not be subject or they should not be mixing or commingling that way. So, you know, there, there are safety measures that will be put into place for anybody that does have that exemption. But again, please understand if, if every resident was asking for only unvaccinated staff in their apartments, it may be very, very difficult to allow or to schedule somebody to come in who's doing your cleaning or who's serving you food. You know, I think we've been doing really well so far. We're all wearing our masks. We're going to continue to wear our masks while we're in that high level of transmission. And we're, we're, you know, it's, it's, it will be new kind of territory for us as we move forward with, with the vaccine mandate. We have close to 100 employees that are not vaccinated right now. Imagine if we have those 100 employees that leave because they're not going to get vaccinated and they don't qualify for an exemption, plus about the 39 positions that we currently have open. So, you know, while we understand that people have choice, if, if we choose to be a vaccinated community, you know, they have the choice to, to either get vaccinated or to leave. You know, we're, it, it's going to be, we may have to change operations based on the vaccination mandate if that goes through. There's a lot of different things that may have to change from an operational standpoint. And I, I can't guarantee, from a scheduling perspective, that every department is able to accommodate residents who don't want an unvaccinated employee or somebody who has received an exemption to, to service you. So the question is, how often are they tested? And currently, unvaccinated staff are tested twice a week and vaccinated staff are actually tested once a week. And we're doing that because we know that even as a vaccinated employee, I can still get COVID. It's not as likely, because I'm vaccinated, it's not as likely for a vaccinated employee to transmit that to a vaccinated resident. I forgot where I was going with that. So as much as an unvaccinated employee is to transmit that. So that's why if they did have an exemption, they would have to wear a N95 mask when, when doing services for the residents. Nancy?
Would it be helpful to you, just for informational purposes, to take a straw ball here and see how many of the residents who need a family would be in favor of the vaccine mandate? Just, just so, would it be helpful to you, if you have a specific goal, and would you like to know more? More people feel that it's hard to be strongly?
Yeah, I, I mean, if you, just like from a raise of hands, would you like, okay. So I guess the Nancy suggestion is if you are for the vaccinate, for the, the mandate vaccination for all staff, please raise your hand. I, I had a feeling it was quite a few, if not everybody. Yeah, I, I'm not sure anybody wants to raise their hand to be opposed. But if you are opposed to the staff not being vaccinated, you know, please raise your hand. I, I, I think all of our residents want our, our staff to be vaccinated. Gail?
We're all senior citizens. Many of us have a lot of health problems. And we, we're all senior citizens. Many of us have multiple health problems. We have religiously followed rules and regs. And to let someone into my apartment who's not vaccinated, it is very risky, I think. And it, it just, I would rather have maybe services decreased than not having someone vaccinated. Like cleaning once a month. But I am very uncomfortable with letting someone into my apartment who's unvaccinated. And I have not gone on any of the social outings because those two are risky, in, in my estimation. So when I have someone who has young kids and they aren't vaccinated and she's not vaccinated, it kind of scares me because I don't want COVID.
I, I certainly can appreciate that. And I think probably the majority of, of every resident here feels the same. I, I know that, you know, CMS, as I said, that mandate was for all healthcare institutions like us, all healthcare communities, be vaccinated. And I, I think the Board of Directors is probably right on board with that. They're doing a final vote after the, the board chair puts something out to all of the board members. And at that point, I'll be able to share exactly where we are. And I'm hoping that'll be within the next few days at, at the latest.
I would suggest, I would suggest that unvaccinated employees wear a red you on their.
Stamp them on the forehead. Yeah, I, you know, at, at some point, if, if we have the vaccine mandate and we have exempted employees, you will know who those unvaccinated people are because at some point, the rest of us won't be wearing masks. You know, and it's, seems like it's forever and down the road. But at some point, you know, we, the, the vaccinated employees won't have to be wearing masks and the unvaccinated will have the N95s. The question was, could the unvaccinated staff member wear a shield in addition to the mask? And it is certainly very possible that we could, we could add that to our protocol. The you on the forehead, right. Fay, Fay, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. The staff has done a wonderful job of keeping us safe around these areas. We have reported before that the number is not as many controlling this rate as they thought. And staffs are in part reducing their, but not as well. And we start these sales if it's very necessary. Hopefully, we live with these meetings. But thank you for it.
You're welcome, and, and I agree. So then her comment was that in, in other meetings that we've had, I've shared that in many communities such as ours, they have not lost as many employees due to vaccine mandates as they originally thought they would. And, and she said that, that, I mean, currently and we, the, the employees have been doing a very good job at, at keeping all of the residents safe. But we, we don't know how many we would lose out of that 100. We know that there are quite a few that have said, I absolutely will not get it. And there are some who might be on the bubble. And if push comes to shove, when the final date comes, you know, then, then that's when we will know how many staff we may lose because of it. Okay, I'm going to move along to Ken. I know we've got quite a few things on the schedule.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Ken, Director of Fund Development and Life enrichment. I just have really a few things to go over. The tally is completed. Our gingerbread winner. The tally is completed. Our gingerbread winner has been announced. And the winning crew was the culinary team from Woodside. So when you go back out to the comments. Yep, I don't know what number it was. Nancy knows what number it was. Number one. That was the number one. And they're marked, they're marked, you'll see. And then number two team was Woodside. So Woodside kind of swept the top two spots. And, and, and from what Nancy tells me, the voting was close, like whispered close, two votes.
Two votes between first and second.
Right. And third, third, third place was yours truly team, Life Enrichment came in third place. So regretfully, we give up the trophy because we held it for a year.
So the, the second place was number nine. Oh, there, I will put tags on what the actual department names. So the first place was number one, Woodside Culinary. The second place went to number nine, Woodside. That was one with all the critters. And a couple of rock cabins and yeah, trees made out of sleep or
Basil, Basil Lee, yeah, Basil, yeah.
And the third place went to Life Enrichment, which was number four, having on the lake.
Yep. All right. So that was fun, right? That is just a great tradition that we do. And it is fun for the staff to participate. And so I think that's going to stick around for a few more years yet to go. Item on fitness, Andre is in Jamaica on a holiday visit with family because that's where family is for Andre. We have a person from MIFs who is substituting. He is going to be our long-term hopeful, you know, substitute for when Andre's not here. His name is Kyle. I think many of you have met him. You also will have met his service dog, right? So he has a chocolate lab service dog. The service dog helps Kyle identify if a seizure is coming. So that's what the service dog does. Do not pet the service dog. Name is Steel. Don't, don't pet him. Don't touch him. I actually, I think it's a herd. Because frankly, it distracts the animal from, from their mission, right? So we don't want to do that. If for some reason, you know, you come across and Kyle is having a, a moment, it is really just pull the cord and we know what to do and whom to contact, right? So it's just like if you come across anything else, but it is highly unlikely, Kyle says. And we certainly want to accommodate all of our people here, right? And Kyle is now one of our, one of our family. So I encourage you to participate in fitness this week. Kyle is super. And, and continue your fitness activities. Any, any questions on that at all? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to explain something. Most service dogs you have is time off and you can pet them. But because his master has a diagnosis which is 24/7, we cannot pet Steel and believe he's a wonderful dog and you want to hug him and look at him.
Who doesn't want to pet a chocolate lamb, right? They are one of the most irresistible animals on the planet. A little bit of library info. We're, we're having continued struggles with the computer in the library for checking books in and checking books out. We are in the process of updating the system, but it's going to be a, a month or more before we complete that process. Please continue to use the paper process. If the computer is not working, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. And when it doesn't, we have to rely, it's a little whack-a-mole where we're trying to figure out what exactly we have to do to get it working again. But please continue to use the paper process. You know, there's a little form you can fill out if you're checking out a book and wanting to do that. Any questions on the library? Let's see, we have, then I have two staff announcements. One is we, we did make a hire for Ashley's replacement. And the young lady's name is Ally Jarvis. I think she won't be starting for a couple of weeks, so that is good news for us. We had a lot, a lot, a lot of interest in the position. And I think a lot, and Nancy and I both feel we had a lot of good quality applicants. So I think you all and we are going to be very, very happy with, with Ally when she comes into the position. But we have a current person I want to bring up. Devin joined our team a while ago, but we haven't had a town hall in a while for you all to meet her. So we're going to embarrass her thoroughly and have her come up and talk about herself.
The one day I don't wear heels. Hi, I'm Devin. I've met most of you so far. But there's tons of new residents and I'm excited to get to work with all of you. I will most likely be the person installing your Echos for you. So a little bit about me, I am born and raised in Kalamazoo. I am currently a Western student. I am majoring in social work and minoring in event management. I started at Lincoln Amjon for elementary school. I went to Millwood for middle school and I graduated from Lloydorks. I'm super excited to get to know all of you. People that I've met so far have been super welcoming and kind and I really do appreciate that. And I look forward to getting to know all of you. Thank you.
So what I heard in that is that she's a lifelong Kalamazoo resident and we hope that she remains a lifelong Kalamazoo resident and she's with us forever. And on that note, I think I'm done unless you have questions. I'm good. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. So you can see from our front row here that we do have some new family member additions. So we're looking forward to welcoming them today. So I'll start there. So we have, since our last town hall meeting, we have moved in eight, nine actually, new residents. And I'll announce eight of those today. So first we have on the first floor, Dwayne and Eleanor Peekstock. They moved in. And I thought this was cute. One of the, the three fun facts about them is that they both attended kindergarten together. And I know, is that so cute? And then they also had to repeat kindergarten together. I'll let them explain why. So I thought that was cute. We welcomed Mary Beth Gettle onto the second floor. Mary Beth, an interesting fact about her is that she has five children, 14 grandchildren and one great-grandchild. Congratulations. And we also welcomed on the second floor Andrea Hyten. So we welcome Andrea. So a super fun fact about Andrea is that she used to work here. So who knew she would become a resident later on? So congrats to all of us and all of her hard work, work for the legacy she's left behind. She started out in, she worked in mail and then she also worked in housekeeping. So welcome aboard Andrea. We also welcomed on the second floor Cheryl and Martin Wasserman. So welcome. Cheryl says that she will admit that algebra is her, was her favorite class in high school. So we'll try not to judge her or get too jealous. And Mr. Wasserman, if you don't know this, he likes to draw cartoons and caricatures. So we've got an artist. Welcome aboard, Mr. And Mrs. Wasserman. On the third floor, we welcomed Grant Kitchen in this month. Make his way around the community. He's catching on pretty quickly. He made it down here. So a fun fact about Mr. Kitchen is that he loves hunting and fishing. And he has been hunting every, every season since he turned 13 years old. I bet you have some stories to share. On the second floor, we welcomed Ann Levin. So welcome. An interesting fact about Ann is that she is one of 12 children. Wow, that is a big family. Also, I'll bet some stories to tell. All right. And on the third floor, we welcome to Mimi Coleman. So welcome aboard Mimi. An interesting fact about Mimi is that she has visited China because her son lives there. So interesting, interesting. All right. So welcome to all of our new residents. Thanks for trusting Friendship Village. And we welcome you to the family. I do have to draw out of my basket. And so Betsy mentioned what we were doing in our community to get you some more, thank you, to get you some more neighbors. And one of those things where we hired a new sales counselor to get some more sales power. His name is Jeremy Collins and he's going to come up and tell you some fun facts about himself.
Hello. As Diana said, my name is Jeremy Collins. I usually tend to talk pretty loud. So if you can't hear me, raise your hand. Pretty good at that. So I was born and raised in further southwest Michigan in DeWajac, moved to Cincinnati. Yes, there we go. I moved to Cincinnati for school and then moved to northeast Ohio to work at the beginning of my career. I am about five years into a service career in the funeral industry. So I have a lot of knowledge base there, but thankfully I get to turn my interesting abilities around in a much more positive light. So I had to come up with three fun facts about me. I live in Portage with two dogs now as of Saturday and one fun cat. None of which have the biggest brains in the world, but that's okay. I enjoy nature quite a bit, so I can't wait until things are a little bit nicer outside, spend a little time in the village woods on my times off for some lunch. So camping, kayaking are some of my favorite things to do when the weather is nice. I also started drinking coffee by way of my great-grandmother at five years old and it has stuck with me since. So if you ever want a cup of coffee, come to Discovery Suite in 147 and I'm happy to drink and chit chat. So thank you. Happy to be aboard.
Thank you, Jeremy. And so the other thing, news, just some quick news before we do the drawing. I wanted to thank everybody who responded to the reviews. We really appreciate your kind words. And so we'll put those to good use. So you may see them on the website and other collateral that we use. So thank you for that. And then last month, we celebrated four sales for November. So we're pretty excited about that. So we're going to have four new neighbors for you. This month so far, we have a one sale working on two. Our aim is always as many as we can get, as many as we have apartments open. And, and I think something fun that, that has happened since the new fiscal years, we have added nine new waitlist numbers. So that's pretty good in short, short period of time. And with that, I will do the drawing. So this month's winner. So for those that don't know, every month we, we have a referral program. So residents that recommend a friend or neighbor or family are entered into a drawing to win a hundred dollars off the Friendship Village Fund of your choice. And then if they move in, you get a thousand dollars off the Fund of Your Choice. Or for credit for the Fund of Your Choice. So this month's winner for the drawing for $100 off your monthly service fee is Gail Fitzpatrick Fox. Congratulations, Gail. All right. Thanks, everyone. We're off to happy selling.
Good afternoon. I'm Candy Harmon and the administrator, which means I oversee assisted living and the long-term rehab area. Something you might know, others might not, is that annually, we're supposed to have a survey from the state of Michigan. And they just came in for a two-year, because of COVID, they didn't come in last year. But they tried to find things that we aren't doing right. Not really. Just to make sure we're in compliance with things. And we only got two citations. So both of them were very minor. And we basically paper citations that we have to do some correction on, just some things we want to document on. There was no infection control citation, which they told us on their exit that that was unheard of. That means our caregivers or our aides and nurses were washing hands appropriately, doing everything they should, wearing their mask, wearing their shield, you know, carrying on the right protocol to keep all our residents safe. And then also the fire marshal Kim comes to at that time and he cites us on four. And again, they're just mostly paper citations, which just means we didn't document things that we were actually doing. So I'm happy with what we got this year. And we're going to ask for a desk review, which means they want me to come back and find more things wrong with us. And hopefully that'll happen. Any questions?
Hello, everybody. You hear me okay? Hello, I am Brandon. I am the director of facilities. So any of you that haven't had the great pleasure to meet me yet, take your opportunity. So I have, I have good news and bad news today. So I guess I'm, I'm going to end on the good news and I'm going to start with the bad. That's just kind of how I roll. So long-term, you know, staff member here that we have, especially in facility services, happens to be the maintenance supervisor, Doug Essex, is leaving us. His last day will be next Monday. So great longevity here. He's done a lot of different things. He's done EBS. He came through the ranks. He got his H Back certifications here. Promoted him, you know, up the ranks to his supervisor and he's done a phenomenal job, kind of dragging everybody in, redirecting, training his guys and getting things back in shape. So I'm happy that he's, you know, like he's looking to kind of pursue his next level of careers. I'm really unhappy that he's leaving us. A lot of, you know, a lot of years there, a lot of knowledge that we just can't replace. He knows where things are at. You know, he can do it over the phone. I watched him do it. He started to me personally when I first got. So good to see him go, but if you see him in the hallway, please, you know, give him a pat on the back. Tell him we're going to miss him. You know, I think he'll still pop in here once in a blue moon. And he's going to be out as a private contractor. So he may actually come in here periodically from different service calls. But just, you know, letting you know, let, you know, give him a pat on the back if you do see him. On a brighter note, I do have a new administrative assistant. So her name is Amy. You may have gotten, you know, some emails at this point. You may have received some one calls from her. She's starting to learn all that. And like with Kathy said, with the state of Michigan coming in, doing the survey and the fire marshal, that was Amy's first week. So that was very chaotic. So I'm going to let her come up and talk a little bit about herself. So Amy, do you want to come up here? So I'm going to let her come up and talk a little bit about herself. So Amy, do you want to come up here?
Hi, my name is Amy, and I'm fully vaccinated. I worked for K Risa about twenty-two years. I've lived in Campbell through all my life. So I'm familiar with the area. And so far, I'm enjoying everything. I look forward to meeting all of you. If you have any questions, concerns, go ahead and call me at my extension, and we can work something out. Thank you.
Okay. So yeah, those are the two, the bad news, good news. Break Granny, she, she has been here a little bit now, a couple of weeks. So you know, getting the hang of it, got the email, got the phone number. So if you need something, you know, please reach out to Amy and we'll, you know, you're going to hear probably a lot more from her in a very short. So since we don't have any questions, she's bringing the microphone to you.
Just quickly, when will the silt shields or the black plastic body come out?
Which ones? Most of them already are. Oh. I will have to check that. They should come down. The, the question was about the black plastic silk fence around some of the swales from the original construction of the clubhouse. But yeah, those can come down. I actually told them to make sure that they pulled the ones from the drains as well. Because there were still silk, you know, silk fences in the drain itself, so it wouldn't allow anything to really build up and go down. I'll get on that. Yes, sir. It's never good.
Number one, what is the policy about cars that I would consider abandoned? For license plates are expired, the car that you're saying that, what is the policy for Friendship Village about these cars? When do they leave? And why can't we give them a?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. So we do a follow-up on that. Usually between myself, Kyle, the ground supervisor, Reagan is involved because it's a resident services thing. Generally, we, we don't have a lot of that. We do actually have three right now. So I don't know which one you're referring to, but yes, one, the family has actually not picked it up. So it may end up becoming ours, just because it is going to be considered abandoned. But yeah, we try to reach out. And on that, those particular ones, I mean, we, two of those residents are here. They just don't necessarily drive it. So those I turn back over to Reagan. So, but the one that doesn't live here anymore, the family just hasn't come in and got the car. We've made multiple attempts to try to get that one out. So worst case, we haven't told them. That's a little harder to do. If it was a repair shop, yeah, we could. But yeah, yeah, it's not something we can do here right now.
Comment number two, the tenant will enter C.
Yes, it was. It was actually scheduled to be replaced before COVID came in. And that one, I think, has just fell through the cracks. Off to do a follow-up on that one. Yeah, that was, that was scheduled. There's actually a couple of them that were scheduled to get done that because of when COVID went down, it just stopped. Remind me of that one. So Amy's here to remind me, so.
Last, last comment, the parking lot on the south side there's one nice big hole in the parking lot. Can't we get some, a so-called cold patch to fill that hole in temporary measure of those spring rolls around? There's a couple other holes that we're starting to. Why can't we call somebody to get yours?
So we do cold patch all the time. We can definitely make sure, I'll tell them how to make sure it gets them in. Strange time of the year, but we can still get something in there somewhere as we're following. But that whole thing is getting redone. We're trying to get it redone this year. So that's scheduled to be in the springtime, that all of Ring Road will be resurfaced. So all of it will be completely redone.
That hole has been there for two plus four months.
Is it, is that by the drain? Is that the one you're talking about?
No, that's by, ride number fourteen.
Okay. Yeah, I drive that way all the time. I might, I might totally missing that one. So. I'll go really slow over there today. But yeah, that, that will be a big coordination to redo, resurface Ring Road. That's going to be a real challenge, a real challenge. Because we won't, you know, don't want to have anybody driving on it. So we might do half in time. So that one, we will be talking much more about. But it'll fix all of those problems. I'm going to leave it up to food. Good afternoon. Everyone hear me? I'm Ryan. I'm the director of culinary services here. If I haven't met you, I think I've met just about everybody. One, the quick follow-up on the state survey. So part of that survey as well is a sanitarium from the state of Michigan coming in and surveying the kitchen. And Kathy never mentioned it, but we had zero, zero citations in the kitchen. So very proud of the team. They, they're working hard. It was very good. It's my first audit actually with the state. So I was happy with that. As a reminder, the culinary conversations are scheduled for this Wednesday at one o'clock. So if you are new, everyone's invited. It's basically a roundtable discussion about what's going on in my departments, what the team's working on, kind of the state of where we're at, and gathering feedback on what everyone wants as far as potential menu items, what people like, what they don't like. So it's a very open dialogue conversation. So I also want to thank everyone for being patient. I know it's been a, a challenge the last week and a half or so as we reopen the dining room, training the new staff members, having to call in and make reservations every day. I totally get it's confusing and it's hard. I just, I don't know the best way to train these new kids without fully opening the dining room and then throw them to the wolves. And I don't want to see them all quit right away. So so far, everyone seems to be picking it up as far as the new staff goes. It's getting better every day. Starting tomorrow, we're going to be at that seventy-five percent capacity. So those of you who may have had trouble getting a reservation should be able to get one. It's, we're going to be pretty close to our normal capacity. So I also wanted, they're getting a lot of questions about Christmas. So Christmas is going to be a, a little bit of a challenge for us. I think we have four servers. However, I am committing to all of you, all of the apartment residents, that we will have a seat for you. So I don't want anyone to have to move in by themselves on Christmas. So we're going to make that work. So let's, again, that's just for the residents inside, inside the building here. I'd love to accommodate for everybody, but just the status of where we're at right now. Absolutely. Can you hear me now? All right. So Christmas, there will be a seat for you on Christmas. Reservations are required still. And thank you, God. It's, it's just for the residents that are in the apartments, unfortunately. I'd love to offer it up to everybody, but we just don't have the staff. So I'm asking everyone on Christmas Day, if you're going to be in the dining room, just be patient. Service may be a little slow that day. Preferably on Friday. Let me, let me get with the team, Kit. I think maybe we can. Yeah, I'm sorry. When can we make reservations for Christmas? So let me get with my team. I mean, right now, we're doing it the day before, but I think for Christmas, maybe we could, you know, start it, start it maybe tomorrow. That's really all I have. Any other questions? Yep. So the, well, really quick, there's a garden home residence. So, so dining on Christmas for garden home residents, unfortunately, you know, a lot of the, again, staffing, we only got four servers scheduled that day that can work. So a lot of the garden home residents inside here, there's a lot, a lot of the residents that live in here, they don't have spouses, they don't have, they're, they're living alone. So I really wanted to try to take care of the residents inside here. My, my initial hope is that shortly after the new year, we'll be able to get garden home residents in here for, for reservations, for lunch, for dinner, for whatever. So we've, we've, we're training currently four servers. We have three more moving orientation on Wednesday. So we're, we're working hard to get staffed up. So it's, I know it's not ideal, but we're not delivering like last year. So that's better, I guess. But yeah.
Brian, with seventy-five percent service, will the time be extended from four to five?
We're gonna, we're gonna keep it the way it is right now, and simply because we want to, want to add a little bit of pressure to the new servers. So. Yes. Yes, David.
When you set out the announcement about the current plan for the three-week phase-in, you said also that you are working on the reservation process with CareMerge. Is that going to be effective pretty soon or very soon? Or what, what can we expect about making reservations more than just one day at a time?
Yeah, we're really hoping so. And to be clear, the reservations, the one day at a time, right now, while we're at this limited capacity, it's, it's simply to allow everyone to have a chance to be able to eat in the dining room. If we have, you know, sixty residents that make a week-long set reservation, there's going to be, you know, sixty more residents that can't get a spot because they're always taken. So I, I wanted, I wanted to be fair as far as, you know, allowing everyone an opportunity to make a reservation every day. As far as the timeframe goes, what we're looking at doing is converting our reservation platform from, it'll still be through CareMerge, but it'll be using our new POS system. And the, the reason for the switch frankly is it'll, it'll allow more flexibility. So with CareMerge, you probably noticed at times, if you've been on CareMerge, we have, there might be two different locations that you have to make a reservation for. Like say, main dining room, this, this capacity, main dining room full open. With CareMerge, we can't adjust anything as far as reservations go without canceling up to five hundred reservations. So it's, it's not flexible when it comes to modifying things. So it's.
So if I understood you, that when we're back at a hundred percent, there will be some process for reservations that will more than just one day in advance?
Correct. Yeah, this is just a temporary, temporary thing so that everyone has a chance to get a reservation.
Thank you. That's really important.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you for going easy on me today. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So I, you are tall. I've been asked to clarify about the rehab status. So for those who don't know, we have fifty-seven certified beds. Forty-one of them are long-term, and sixteen of them are rehab. And they're in a special area, a separate area, in their private rooms. So at this point, the rehab is closed down. But we are still taking rehab patients. So we are admitting people for short-term rehab, but they're just not guaranteed that they're going to have a private room at this point. My goal is to open up the rehab in January. Originally, it was a staffing issue that kind of staffed. Then we got COVID patients, so the residents, so the COVID residents had to go to rehab, and that was our COVID unit. We no longer have any COVID resident, so it is now back to staffing. However, we have hired the critical part of staffing, which was nurses. We still need two full-time night nurses. Those, they have been hired. CNAs have been hired. So again, if everything goes well, we are shooting to open up the rehab in January. Any other questions? I answer them? Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. I'm going to move this since Ken is a lot of people looking at my neck. Anyways, I, you know, I just want to give one more shout out to the, to the House Center in rehab, Lisa, Kathy, Ryan, Brandon, really, everybody up at this table for this survey is fabulous. It's just absolutely fabulous. So congratulations. The, you know, the, the amount of citations that a facility can actually get is, you know, the book is about this big. When Hippo went into play, it actually is the most highest regulated business in the country over nuclear power. So that is how, I mean, how many citations somebody, some facility could get, and to get two, and to have none that are resident affected is just absolutely amazing. So I really congratulate the team. And lastly, unless there's any other questions, again, I just want to thank everybody for your generosity, for the employee appreciation. I know the employees were super excited when they opened up those, those checks to see what those amounts were. The generosity was just overwhelming. So hopefully you enjoyed how they were able to thank you in the little video that they did. They had, as you could imagine, they had so much fun doing it. And Ken did a great job putting that together. So just want to thank him for, for doing that as well. So again, thank you very much. I hope you have a wonderful holiday, and hopefully you'll have some time to see family and friends, whether it's here or out in their homes. And please practice safe, but safe precautions for COVID. We appreciate that. Have a great day, everyone. Thanks for coming.